All right, thank you all. Okay, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 2nd, 2023 Meeting of the Planning Board. First item of business to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from March 3rd, 2022. Anybody have any questions or comments relative to the minutes?
No questions.
Steve?
No.
No questions?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Entertainer motion.
I move that we approve the March 3rd, 2022 minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next item of biz- business is to review and sign bills. We have no bills for this month. Next item of business is board member comments. Mr. Ralph?
No comments for this month, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry?
I have no comments.
Mr. Ortegus?
No comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry? Mr. Thomas?
No comments.
And do you have any comments, Mr. McGoldrick?
None at this time, thank you.
And I don't have comments either. Okay. Our next item of business is a new public hearing. It's for a proposed hydrogen storage and compression system pad, site plan modification, Nellis Jamesbury Incorporated. Location is 42 to 44 Bodig Drive. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the public notice?
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Selectment Hearing Room, actually the Shrewsbury Public High School, to hear the application of Plug Power, 968 Albany Shaker Road, Latham, New York, 12110, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning by law, Section 7 F3, for site plan modification by the planning board to allow for the construction and installation of hydrogen storage and compression system pad outside of the building, as shown on plans entitled Gen Fuel HFC, from Nellis Valmet City of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, in 32 sheets dated December 21st, 2022, prepared by SPEC Engineering and Consulting LLC, 349 Northern Boulevard, Albany, New York, 12204, stamped by Joseph S. Burke, P.E. The subject property is located at the end of Bodig Drive and at the northern side of Main Street and consists in whole or entire of Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 19, plot 145003. Copy of the plans may be seen in the planning of the Department of Planning and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website.
Thank you. Are the proponents present?
We are.
Please come down. And if you could just please introduce yourselves and tell us why you're here.
Me first.
My name is Paul Grady. I'm the Program Director for Plug Power for the hydrogen infrastructure installations for the general customers that we have.
I'm Jeremy Funkhouser, Operations Engineering Manager at Valmet. So I've been working with them the whole time.
And I'm Thomas Haddock, and I'm an Assistant Project Manager with Plug Power.
Very good. Give us an idea of what you got going on here?
Sure. You guys have the plans?
Yeah, we have the plans.
So located at 44 Bodig Drive, in the back northeast corner, is a proposed location for a hydrogen storage, delivery, compression system that will fuel non-public indoor fast fueling dispensers inside for utilization for the production forklifts that will utilize our fuel cells inside. Out here, they'll have a vertical tank that will contain bulk liquid hydrogen. There's also gaseous storage tubes for the bulk storage of the gaseous hydrogen, as well as two gas compressors and a distribution skid that will distribute the hydrogen to the indoor dispensers.
Okay.
I can keep going through if you want.
Yeah, please.
I don't know how many questions you have. We do show all the setbacks in our property plans from the property lines, the wetlands, the easements, and I know there was a concern about flood plain as well. We do have that available in this set of plans as well. Here is an overlay of the flood plain, and we're showing where we are 105 feet from the flood plain that is Zone A, in the adjacent area behind. And on the east portion of the property, we're 138 feet away from the edge of our equipment pad to the flood plain. This is just pretty much a blown up of the overall site. It's just zoomed in, and if you want to get any more details. The size of our pad, it's going to be a concrete pad, about six, eight inches thick. It's 50 feet by 41 feet. There will be a concrete unloading pad that's going to sit underneath the liquid delivery trailer, as well as a small drive aisle that's roughly 80 feet long to attach the existing drive to our delivery points. The existing site is all wooded right now, so there will be a portion clouded here of the heavy timber will be removed and will be graded down to make way for our installation. That site right there is about 2,500 square feet, give or take. This is just a blown up version without the trees to kind of see a little bit better. The exclusion zones are highlighted here that will be have clear distance from any combustibles inside this area. There'll be no vegetation or any heavy timber that can be caught on fire in case there was a defecation event or a flare fire from our vents on the tank. We'll show a 15-foot radius from all the gaseous storage and a 25-foot radius per IFC for all the liquid hydrogen storage. The last sheet is just pretty much a blown up portion of the applicable codes, the setback tables, all the calculations for the setback, and everything else that goes into exactly how far and how we locate all the spacing of the ground storage, the compression equipment, as well as the indoor dispensers.
Okay.
I can field any questions that you have.
Before I open up the board member comments, Mr. McGoldrick, could you give us a quick overview of his discoveries?
Thank you. So as part of these projects, we do meet with other land use departments and other permitting agencies. We had two preliminary comments back from other departments, primarily from the Fire Department, requesting some additional time to provide formal comment on this project. They do note as a preliminary matter that this will be reviewed at the state level for fire safety at the state Fire Marshal's Office. We also had a comment from, as a preliminary matter, from the Water and Sewer Department noting that there is a water main proximal to the location of this pad, and they likewise requested some additional time to review that and see if there's additional requirements or relocation of the pad that's needed. So I'm hoping to have those comments back in short order.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Ralph?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, my questions were mostly relating to the safety aspects of it, and I'm glad to hear our planning board saying that, I mean, the planning department staff saying that it will be reviewed by the fire safety at the state level, which is good. Are there any other MEPA filings that you will be doing? This is Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Are there any trigger criteria that would result in filing for those?
No.
No?
From our research, the ground disturbance square footage is below the threshold that would trigger any environmental monitoring or reporting. With that, there is no discharge in the outdoor or indoor systems itself. The dispensers themselves will withdraw deionized water from the fuel cells as part of the power generation of the fuel cells. As the protons cross the exchange membrane, when they come back together, we introduce oxygen and it does create deionized water. That will be disposed of in the sanitary system already existing inside the building. Every time we fuel roughly, you're looking at a half a gallon that's extracted from the fuel cells as part of that process.
Are there any other similar facilities in Massachusetts of this type and where are they located, if you have any here?
Yeah, so I, we just finished one up in Tewksbury earlier this year, and that was for a Home Depot Distribution Center. And I know that was heavily involved with the state fire as well and reviews. It's a fairly similar site. This site here does not have liquid cryogenic liquid pumps. It is a purely gaseous system. The only liquid you see is in the bulk delivery and storage vessel. It's pretty much the latest that we have in Massachusetts. Massachusetts right now, there's a lot of customers that are looking to introduce this into their distribution centers, and we're still in negotiation in terms of the commercial aspects of that.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
My first question was just regarding whether or not the Fire Department's reviewed it, but it sounds like that's in process. All the question I had for you was just, you mentioned that the area where this will be located is heavily wooded now, and when you said you cleared the vegetation, are you clearing back far enough so that no tree or anything could potentially fall?
Yeah.
What's the radius you're working on, or?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two radiuses that dictate, you know, proximity of combustibles. One is dictated by NFPA 2, which is the governing code for all the hydrogen installations. The other is the International Fire Code. With the setbacks and the type of system we have here, the governing code for the maximum distance is actually driven out of IFC. So the International Fire Code for bulk liquid storage is 25 feet from the storage vessel itself. Our storage vessels are insulated. They do have a double wall with a vacuum means. That also leads to reduction in setbacks per the NFPA code. That's why IFC is the governing code. So any heavy timber or vegetation within 25-foot radius of the bulk storage vessel will be cleared.
Okay. Thank you. Just a clarifying point. So the trees that are closest after you're done clearing, the height of them, they will not reach this area?
Correct.
That's been established.
Yeah, we will make sure that.
Make sure.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ortegus?
Just two questions. One, I assume that you're cutting down trees. You've had a wetlands person take a look at this, and the wetlands aren't implicated.
Correct. We indicate the wetlands easement on our drawings and our plans, and we are outside of that wetlands area and easement.
Okay, so you've gone to conservation, Chris, they've gone to conservation, or someone's taken a look at it?
No, I don't believe they've gone to conservation, but the plans were provided to the Conservation Department.
Okay, right. And just for my edification, what is, what are the advantages over this fuel cell versus like the old school propane forklifts that, you know, that my understanding is propane is pretty plentiful and cheap? So just explain it to me, just because I'm curious.
It's emissions. So with the green, with the green drive everywhere across the nation, propane still has some emissions inside, especially a distribution facility. You need to make sure that there's ventilation and everything else. Our hydrogen fuel cells do not have any harmful VOC emissions at all. The emissions is just purely O2, and then we do recover the deionized water that's generated from the reintroduction of the hydrogen molecules. Above lithium ion advantage is the charging time. So you're not taking batteries. You don't have to have giant racks of batteries on charge, and you're not swapping them out. You're not waiting for them to charge for five, six hours. Our fuel cells can operate industrial forklifts at full power for about eight-hour shift, and then it's a 90-second to maybe two-minute refueling time. It acts much like a petrol pump. There's a hose, there's a quick connect fitting, there's a grounding, and there's a dewatering cable. Those are connected in a certain sequence. Two minutes later, they're off and running again. So it's an efficiency upgrade for the plant in terms of downtime as well as inventory. They don't have to keep battery chargers. They're not paying for all of that either.
Right, we're getting rid of 28 batteries, lead acid batteries. So that's what this is going to replace. It's going to give us 6300 square feet on the factory floor, and I think it says, or calculations that we went through, it's going to have a 30% reduction in CO2 after the first year and 51% after six years. So, I mean, it's our, it's our big green project that we're trying to do this year.
To improve the air quality within the facility?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
My only question was from the Fire Department, to make sure that the Fire Department, we are not hydrogen experts here, so.
Understood, and we can arrange, you know, meetings with them. We do first responder training. Prior to energizing and kind of operating the plant, we do reach out to the Fire Department. They bring usually their chief, and it's usually one or two shifts over multiple days. We'll cover, you know, response tactics and first responder training. We offer that to the local Fire Department and the state agencies that they want to participate as well.
Okay, that's all. I just had a couple of questions. I believe one of them was addressed, is the conservation, if it's a requirement, and I think you'll let us know if, because you said the information was given to them, that they've made a decision, it's not required?
I can follow up and make sure.
Okay, so we just want to make sure the conservation, because it is.
Yeah, and if that's a separate submittal that we need to do, I don't think we've done it. I think it flows naturally through the path of building permit.
Right, but I think because you're building closer to the wetland area.
We can reach out to them.
They may require, they may require you. And in our town, in this process for the planning board, we typically do not go forward with plans until conservation is given their, you know, their okay.
Their green light.
Okay, so that's the first item. The second is, again, it's more of an edification from myself. So hydrogen, as an individual, you're thinking, you know, fire, right, explosion, right? So for the truck passage for the fueling of this site area, is there a state or federal guideline that require, what's going to happen? Are we going to have escorted vehicles there? Or how, please explain, how does the material get to you once this is built?
Yeah, so they're not escorted. Our delivery trailers are built in accordance and they're operated in accordance with the DOT guidelines. So there are restrictions generated from the Department of Transportation regarding cryogenic fuel and just liquid transportation. It's not only hydrogen, it's oxygen, it's propane. That's all driven by the DOT. The DOT does not require specific escorts, if you will. Hydrogen, although it's a hazardous material, doesn't fall under that category where a dedicated escort is required in any state to our knowledge. Beyond that, we do take a look at our delivery routes to make sure hazmat, there's no hazmat restrictions in certain, obviously residential streets have some hazmat delivery restrictions, so our delivery routes have been mapped out so that we basically stay off of any restricted areas with our delivery trucks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one follow-up question. The other facility you mentioned in Massachusetts, is that just approved or under construction, or is it in operation?
It's in operation.
It's in operation?
Yep.
How long has it been in operation?
Three or four months, three or four months. They finished up construction right before winter hit. And they're, they're a much larger facility. They have almost 300 trucks that they're operating there with fuel cells with an 18,000-gallon bulk liquid tank.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. Please come down to the mic and identify yourself.
I was wondering what.
Excuse me, I need your name and address, please.
Max Strickland, 16 Raymond Ave. I was wondering what maintenance costs was involved with maintaining this, this pad or this facility, and who would be responsible for performing the maintenance and the cost of the maintenance?
Sure. Good question. So Plug Power is self-maintaining all of our equipment. We do daily checks on the pad itself outdoors. We will have a technician that's available on site at least eight hours a day. I believe this contract's for five days a week. They are on call if they need it outside of that. There is a maintenance and a subscription plan that's built into our sale, our commercial sale to the owner on this. Nobody that's not a Plug Power authorized employee does any maintenance on the fuel cells, does any safety resets of any of the dispensing station or is allowed inside the, inside the hydrogen pad. The hydrogen pad itself will have a security fence around it, six foot tall. It will be locked at all times. Only our Plug Power personnel will have the keys, and if required, if advised, the Fire Department's also given a set of keys. To attend any emergency, the first responders do not have to enter the building. They do not have to enter the pad. There isn't a remote emergency shutdown device that's available on the external side of the building, but as soon as they arrive, if there is an issue that hasn't been addressed yet, they will push that, and that will basically shut down the hydrogen supply to both the building and the pad and create a safe condition.
Okay. I think he was looking for a number. Do you have a rough idea?
A maintenance cost?
Yeah. Was that your?
That was part of it, but.
But I think you would.
Okay, okay. So are you satisfied with the answer? As long as the town understands the cost, the yearly cost or whatever.
Cost to the town is zero.
Yeah, this is a private venture. This has got nothing to do with the town.
Purely private. They pay. We perform.
They're looking for a discount, just saying. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay, seeing nothing, because we have to wait for information, we're going to, I'm going to request or ask for a continuance of this hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the proposed hydrogen, hydrogen storage and compression system pad, a site plan modification, Nellis Jamesbury, location 42 through 44 Bodig Drive until March 3rd.
Second.
March 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If you guys do hear back before then, is it possible to continue ahead of this hearing again?
March 2nd would be the next time that they can act, but we can make sure that everything is tidied up for them.
Yeah, any, any questions that you may have relative from now until March 2nd, you can contact the Planning Department of the town.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for 1 to 7 Maple Avenue, Beale Commons Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Shrewsbury Haskell MLLC. Location is 1 to 7 Maple Ave. We do have a letter for a request for continuance. Does anyone have any questions or comments relative to the continuance request?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Entertainer motion.
I move that we continue the Beale Commons, 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, Site Plan Approval and Special Permit until March 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item of business is a continued public hearing. Mr. Ortegus will be recusing himself. This is for a proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC. Continued public hearing from location 440 Hartford Turnpike. We also have a letter for requesting the continuance of this hearing. Do we have any questions or comments relative? I know that they're still working out the walls.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, entertainer motion.
I move that we continue the proposed warehouse and distribution facility site plan approval, 440 Hartford Turnpike, to our March 2nd, 2023 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for proposed automobile dealership, site plan approval, Bock Shrewsbury Worcester LLC. Location is 701 Boston Turnpike. Mr. Ricker?
Good evening. Chris, do you have a question?
Is Patrick coming?
No Patrick today.
No Patrick.
If you, please introduce yourself and your team.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, but for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with offices on 11 Maple Avenue, and I am here representing Bock Subaru of New England. With me to my right is Michael Clemmie from Subaru of New England, also Maureen McQ from McMahon Associates, the traffic engineers. We also have Todd.
Stocker.
Stocker from Patrick. He's seated behind us, and Brian DuMaze from Subaru of New Since our last meeting, there has been a num, there have been a number of things that have been submitted to you. The site impact statement has been filed, the response to the Assistant Town Planner's comments has been filed, the man responses to the peer review comments was filed, Thompson Liston's responses to the peer review comments of MDM was also filed, Thompson Liston's responses to Graves, Graves Engineers comments has also been filed with you, and McMahon's updated traffic impasse statement has been filed as well. So all, you've had plenty to read since, since our last meeting, I'm sure.
Actually, I received this on Tuesday.
Okay, so you haven't had plenty to read.
We've had plenty to read, just had, had plenty of time to read it.
And, and we understand that. With respect to the stormwater report, that's also been submitted. I think Chris can, can verify that. Also submitted have been updated landscaping plans and details. The geotechnical report with the boring logs has been delivered directly to GZA for their review. So the address issue with the assessors is, is something that we're working on. We expect that the address will be 711 Boston Turnpike, and, and that needs to be finalized with the assessors, but I don't see any issue there. With respect to the walls and the slope, that's, that's the remaining item that we wanted to talk to you about. As you know from the plan, all of the walls on this site and all, and the slope are substantially interior. There is no, there's no way they would affect any of the neighboring properties or any of the neighbors or the butters or anything. Our geotechnical engineers that we've spoken with to date about the request for wall designs and, and plans before you close, keep telling us, ask them if they would close so that then we know that your site is complete as far as the planning board goes, and then we can, we can do the plan so you're not spending extra money, you're not going to have to do it twice. That's what we have been faced with, so we do not have that done yet. Our request is for you to consider, at least, when you do close this matter, closing it subject to us submitting to you and to the engineering for peer review and for peer review, plans for the walls before any building permits or any, anything like that would get issued. That way, our engineers can be certain as to the plan itself, the overall plan, so that they can appropriately design the walls and the slope. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
With respect to any questions you may have, Patrick is not here tonight relative to the plan, but we do have Maureen here from McMahon to. but, uh, we do have Maureen here from, um, McMahon to address any questions you may have about her responses to the peer review and any questions that may have been brought up from that.
Before I open up for questions from the board, I just want, um, so because we just received this information on Tuesday, I was advised, I had a pre-meeting with, um, the planning department. We will be needing the response from Graves reviewing your response to them, right?
Understood.
You understand that's the normal process, right?
Understood. There, uh, I, I understand that there was some discussion with Jeff at Graves and, and he was gonna try to get a response to you, but obviously he didn't, right, so.
There's a lot of stuff in there.
Yes, there is.
Very detailed, I get it, but it, it's, it's a lot of material. Okay. Uh, questions from the board, Mr.?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman. I need to wait till Graves reviews that and provides us some comments on the comments, you know? But no, no questions.
Any other general questions about the plan itself?
None at this.
Okay. Mr. Jerry.
Same. I have no general questions. I'm just need to get through.
Mr. Otto Lakis?
Just the only comment, is Mr. Mishaw gonna weigh in on the McMahon responses?
I believe they were sent over yet.
Okay, so we're waiting for that, so.
Yep. Yep, okay. Which we, they should have plenty of time to, to review it by. Understand, yep. Mr. Thomas?
Same thing. We can't really do anything without the Graves' review, so.
Um, as far as you're bringing up about the interior, uh, walls and so forth, if my memory is correct, you're on the back end where the larger slopes are or the bigger slopes. Somewhere around five or six hundred feet from the property line, does that sound about right?
Easily.
Okay. And then everything on the inside, because they are pretty steep here as well. Um, that's, that's my only concern. It's, it's, I know it would be a concern for you being the property owner, but when you're gonna have, you know, the public are gonna be going around those areas, it's, I think it's important. So it's just, it's a concern on my end for the interior, not so much on the outside as it affects potential neighbors, more so on the inside where the higher slope is or the greater slopes are for, um, the safety factor, that's all.
Right, and, and as I said, I mean, we would, our request is that, uh, your approval would be subject to subsequent approval by you and engineering and peer review of the wall designs that we submit.
And, and I'm somewhat in agreement, I don't know if the rest of the board is as well, because it is more of an internal issue for your, for your business, it's not necessarily gonna impact the, um, other, um, abiding properties. So I, I'm more inclined.
You said it better than I did. Yes, thank you.
This would be structural engineer standard.
Yes, yes.
Well, we can certainly draft some sort of a condition that'll include the, you know, the, that there will still be a review of that, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I, I don't know, the other board members can weigh in on that as well.
That's what we're asking for, is that condition.
No, I don't have an issue with that.
Fine with that.
Okay, so it sounds like you're probably okay to go forward with your plan with, um, with your wall design or get that information to your, uh, to your design team.
Subject to the approval.
Okay, um, so because we do have to worry, I, I don't have any other questions relative to the plan itself, um, as it stands, and I'm not anticipating any additional, um, changes myself, um, but this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Mr. Lopelado, please come down, introduce yourself.
Um, some of it's just actually with traffic, so would the traffic queues expected to go past your driveway during, you know, peak hours and some of the even non-peak hours? Are there any safety concerns that you feel like would spring from that? And I'm not, I'm not begging the issue, I'm just asking. The queues go past your driveway, what, what's the typical impact of that?
On South Street, you're talking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so the right-in, right-out, uh, restriction that was updated on the latest plans that, uh, will restrict any crossing left-turning vehicles. So right-turning vehicles will not have any crossing maneuvers, they will turn into their own, uh, lane that's right there. Um, and any queues or waiting that they may have to do on-site, if the queue extends beyond the drive, it would be an internal queue. Um, so I don't see that, right, right-in, right-out is a very common.
Um, it was hard to tell from the plan, what's the pitch of the South Street driveway? It seems quite steep, that's why I'm asking.
Well, it, it meets the regulations within, uh, within the bylaw relative to the pitch as it comes from South Street to the driveway. And it, it also meets the regulations, um, relative to our bylaw, uh, which limits the, the grades of driveways, uh, to any use.
We, we'll have that information for you for the next meeting.
Okay.
I wasn't certain we had that for.
I think there's, there is a, there is a grade, um, number. And then you'll have to get a waiver request if you wanted to change that. I think it's ten percent. Some, some, going off the top of my head. It is ten percent.
Not like the, not like the subdivision.
But within a certain distance of South Street, it has to be, I think, two percent. I think it goes two percent.
As you get closer to South Street.
Yes, correct. Flattens out. So there's a landing area.
Yep.
It does flatten out once you get onto the property.
So. Okay, so the traffic, the design is that the traffic signs are going per, basically enforce the right-in, right-out?
It's a curved island, so it physically restricts cars to turn in the right direction.
And that is on the new plan?
Yes.
That, the, the plan revisions happen, may.
Is, is there gonna be any intent to put some form of restriction there so that people can't use that during the hours they're not supposed to?
I believe at the last hearing, there was discussion about the truck, uh, restriction for signs.
So just signage, okay.
And, and we'll control the traffic also. We own the car carriers, so we can dictate when the car carriers come and go.
Okay. Um, so you, you brought it up just a minute ago, the design that was discussed in the previous meetings included having like a plateau so that traffic could come down and have a plateau to safely slow or stop before entering the intersection? I didn't see it on the plan, so I'm just confused as to whether I'm just reading the wrong plan or?
It's not necessarily a plateau, but what it does is it meets the guidelines that are, that are stipulated in our bylaw relative to the distance off of the street that you have to be at a certain pitch, which I believe is two percent.
So, okay, so there's no, nothing preventing someone from sliding into the, the intersection?
Well, there's a, um, there's a, there's a median there that, uh, wouldn't, um, stop anybody from going straight out into the intersection for sure.
I could show you that on the, I wanna, like.
That's what I was trying to figure out, I'm just looking at it.
Right there.
Yeah, I can see that, but there's no, sort of as you're coming down, there's no resting spot before you enter here, so.
It's just like any other driveway or like at your house or like anywhere else, there's a, there's a.
That's why I asked the.
But that's what our bylaws are.
Yeah, the bylaws.
So the grading, it's within that, which is, which is within the grading guidelines, um, set forth.
Plus the curve, of the curve.
Mr. Mishaw brought it up at one of the other meetings.
Plus there's a curve there as, as, which addresses that, it's a raised island.
Yep.
So in terms of the, the controlling the traffic, Mike, I, I know you had said that you guys control the trucks. Uh, has there been issues at the current location with car carriers being not where they belong and things like that?
I, I would like to address that. I know that there's been comments, uh, at previous meetings before this board that there were problems. Mr. Clemmie is aware of that, uh, and he has stated that he will straighten that out. Uh, we don't expect there to be problems. He has stated to you, and he's stating to you now, again, that they own the trucks, they employ the drivers, they will control this. And I think, and I would ask you to take his word to that at this stage, that's all we can do.
I think there had been a history of problems at that.
Yes.
At the, the old Tudor and.
There were a lot of complaints. One of the reasons why the, this is moving.
Necessitated the move.
This is why we're moving.
Yeah.
Yeah. The car carriers will go all inside.
The location of that site.
It was a self-location, it was in, it was in a tight neighborhood, it, 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 it developed complaints.
Understandably, the neighbors were upset.
Sure, sure. So, okay, so the, the.
So, so the drive, the, I, I guess there's a certain amount of, you know, there's, there's a bunch of neighbors that will never be convinced that this is a safe thing, right? Let's not try and reconcile that. Um, I guess what we would ask for is a final condition. Um, we don't wanna have to enforce these promises or enforce someone not using a driveway when they're not supposed to. We would ask for one final, you know, compromise, um, to eliminate commercial traffic from the South Street entrance. Leave it right-in, right-out for just plain traffic and that's fine, but take the commercial traffic off of it. Because a car carrier being three times the size of a normal car, trying to get out into that intersection and everything else presents its own sets of problems. So, and we don't wanna be the neighbors, like the current neighbors are, having to call and say so-and-so's using the driveway when they're not supposed to, that's not our job. We don't wanna have to do that.
Understood. Um, my understanding though is you're expecting two possible deliveries during the course of a week. So that's one car carrier twice a week, which will have an impact of maybe fifteen minutes twice a week. So this isn't, uh, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the amount of that traffic coming out onto South Street from the car carriers is really minimal.
So is the point that car carriers only is what's going to be allowed in that, in that entrance? Because when we discussed this last time, that was not it. It was all commercial traffic.
They have parts trucks too, which are probably no different than the Amazon trucks that invade my neighborhood.
Which are like vans.
Yeah, they're vans, transit vans and things of that nature.
I think the biggest concern was the, the car carrier.
There's, there's.
Well, I understood.
Yeah.
It, it also, and, and I'm just speaking probably out of turn at this point. Um, the volume of traffic generated from a car dealership is significantly different than the car traffic that would be coming from any other retail establishment. Completely different.
Don't disagree.
Okay, so I, I understand the concern, um, but as I understand the amount of those car carriers, it's, it's pretty minimal in the, in the grand scheme of things, a couple of times during the week. It, I, I don't envision that being a huge problem.
So any commercial traffic will be allowed on this entrance? Is that fair?
Anything that they need to service their facility. So if they've got.
So there's no restriction other than the right-in, right-out?
Right-in, right-out, right-in, right-out, although.
So I do believe.
We do have a restriction of hours, we have a restriction on the hours.
There's a restriction of hours for that, that commercial traffic?
So we're not.
None of which can be enforced.
It will, it will be.
You come to us and we'll enforce it.
So that's a condition, so that's a condition of the zoning board of, so that's a condition of the, sorry.
Excuse me, hold on, we gotta get out of control.
So that's a condition of the zoning board of appeals decision. Um, what I would ask the board to consider is mirroring that condition in the planning board. Um, that would allow for enforcement to be a joint effort between the planning department and the building inspector, and, um, I don't foresee any issue.
I'd agree with us.
Okay, I think we can, I think we can manage with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Connie Cammon at thirty-two Brentwood Drive. I live right, um, at the top of the hill. And, and I have two boys, a three-year-old and six-year-old, and they're quite adventurous. We have a backyard with a play space. My concern is that the steep drop and the building being built into the hill, how much steeper this drop could be and whether or not they'll be fencing to prevent adventurous boys who are going to go past perimeter, even though I can, I mean, tell them not to, let's say I turn my back, are they gonna fall off into an abyss and, and hurt themselves?
Mr. Ricker.
We expect fence on top of a structural wall that would be required as, as a matter of course by the building department. I, I would expect that. It, it's always required by the building.
Um, just from, just from. So in the area that she's discussing, is there gonna be any disturbance of land? How close to the?
Well, there's like nine acres, nine or ten acres back there, um, between.
It's good five hundred feet from the wall.
Right, but, but you're gonna stop your land excavation five to six hundred feet prior to the property line?
Yes.
Correct. So it's, it's substantially, I understand that.
It's substantially interior to the lot.
Right, it is private property, so I, I, it's already steep.
Well, it's all wooded area, and then if you come to the wall, you get a fence on top of the wall, it's a regulation. When the wall is so high, you have to put a fence on it so no one couldn't fall over. We don't want anyone getting hurt, obviously. So you couldn't, you'd have to walk around with fence to get them neutral ground.
Okay.
You wouldn't fall over, it'd be very safe, yeah, that, it's a safety concern in our way too. So we had a customers that had little kids, and they walked back there also, we wouldn't want them to get hurt also.
Absolutely, thank you. I also am curious because, um, living next to this wooded area that's, has been wooded for so long, I, we, we see deer and, um, turkeys and a lot of wild animals around this area, and it's like a nice nature view for my boys when they see them come into our yard. Out of curiosity, um, what, what is this, how, how is, how is the family of deer that's gonna be, that has been living there? How, how's that going to be addressed?
I just don't know.
I, I, I don't.
Like, move them to zoo or?
I mean, this is, this is a.
This is not a relocation.
This is a problem in every development. Whenever you go to develop any property that is wooded, this is a question that comes up, and unfortunately, the wildlife has to move on. How it moves on, honestly, I don't know. It, it does though.
There, it's not a requirement.
I understood there was a, a MIPA, uh,
Yes.
meeting that, that needed to be held, how, what's that timeline look like?
That could take quite some time.
We're, we're applying to that now.
That, that MIPA, um, the MIPA meetings and the requirements take literally months to get, get through.
Could take a year.
It can take a year.
Whoa.
Yeah, I know, whoa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Hi, I'm Carol Barton, I live at thirty Brentwood Drive. I just have one quick question. So regarding the traffic, I understand everyone thinks the right-in, right-out is great sense. But your own peer review reports, first comment was, if there's a South Street entrance, only allow emergency vehicles. And to me, it just feels that comment is totally dismissed and ignored. You asked an engineer for their opinion, and that was their response. And I feel like everyone just keeps saying, it's no problem, let trucks come down South Street, let car carriers come down. Your peer review reports are just emergency vehicles. So how do you reconcile that?
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, so the peer review report explicitly states that, um, they, uh, would, uh, recommend to have a right-in, right-out or emergency access. They do note that their preferred option is, um, to have, um, emergency access only. Um, but the recommendation was primarily against having full access and not the restricted right-in, right-out. Um, we've discussed this at length, uh, we've received some informal comments from, uh, MassDOT looking at their preference for, um, access to the site and how this, uh, would be facilitated. Um, so we, um, primarily looked at, um, Mass D O T actually requested for full access, uh, looking at the impacts primarily from, um, the Route Nine, uh, perspective. Um, obviously the peer review engineer is looking from the local road perspective. So as part of that, we consulted, you know, seeing the, the two peer reviews that, uh, the peer review and the, um, uh, MassDOT engineering, um, being somewhat in conflict of recommendation. Um, we consulted with, uh, D P W and the engineering department to see, um, what their recommendation would be in terms of the access. They felt that the right-in, right-out, um, was, uh, a sufficient compromise between the two designs. Um, I'd note that, um, many of the similar, uh, businesses on Route Nine have both, uh, full access on-side streets as well as the Route Nine access. Um, so, um, that was part of the, the, um, I think the back and forth that was had, uh, in looking at the right-in, right-out access. Um, that said, the board, you know, does have discretion to restrict further if they, uh, see fit. Um, but the current proposal is for the right-in, right-out.
Well, I, I also think that, that the town told the applicant to pursue a two curb cut option on Route Nine through MassDOT, and MassDOT told them there was no way that was gonna happen.
Correct.
And if you have one point of access, it would be kind of a nightmare.
The fire department would be happy.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I'm not saying don't have it, but again, I think we're all just trying to come back to some reasonableness. This intersection, if my understanding is correct, it's an E. It goes from A to F. We're adding E before this project. There's been two fatalities, like this, I think everyone agrees it's a tough intersection. And when you mentioned other locales having access on side streets, none of them pour into an intersection. So I think you're comparing an apple to an orange. This goes right into the intersection. And if you're saying there's not much commercial traffic coming down, why not just make them go right on Route Nine and simply do a U-turn at one forty that is purposely built for that to deal with car carriers, to deal with these commercial vehicles? That's not a big ask. It's a stone's throw from the project.
I understand your concerns, uh, and, uh, Mr. McGoltrick's position. We've, we've got, we've peer review comments with recommendations. They get balanced against other boards and, and departments within the community. And we, through that discussion, this was the ultimate, uh, decision that came out of that and being a compromise to achieve as much safety as we can interior to the site as well as, uh, the, getting access to the site. to the site.
I think it's just hard for us neighbors that this is a public hearing and we're asked to come share our opinions, our impressions.
Your opinions are heard.
They're heard, but I think sometimes we felt like they're not listened to, that, you know, the boards are making these decisions, and we're just saying, fine, have the entrance on South Street, but just don't allow car carriers, large vehicles.
So my understanding, just so that we're clear on the car carriers, is the only car carriers are going to be exiting on South, so it's that two hundred feet of South Street. There's not going to be any car carriers coming down South Street.
Two hundred and eighty feet.
Two hundred and eighty feet. Okay, so they're going to be coming down Route Nine into the site from the Route Nine and coming out, and actually, it's an easier, it's better for any other intersection to do a U-turn on Route Nine to get them back to four ninety-five.
But not when, like, we deal with this intersection with the backups on the best of days. It's horrific as is. It's an E, so it gets to get worse, it becomes an F, the worst rating. It's an E. And to the thought of adding car carriers to this traffic is...
Two.
If this is accurate, so perhaps it's two, but maybe two's too, too many.
Understood. All right, so the...
Just to give a summary of what's in our updated traffic analysis that we have now produced with the right in, right out changes, the twenty twenty-nine no build conditions, which is what we would compare the twenty twenty-nine build conditions with the project to, the intersection does operate, as you stated, an E in the morning and the afternoon peak hours, and then level of service D during the Saturday midday peak hours. Those overall level of service for the intersections only increase by seconds with this project in place, seven seconds or less overall, just to give a sense of the level of service.
And I, and I'd just like to emphasize, we also have restricted hours again, so we're not entering the intersection with car carriers during these peak hours that, that she's talking about.
And the truck turning maneuvers, which I believe were included on Patrick's plan, they're all accommodated within the southbound lanes of South Street. The truck can turn with the right turnout restriction without crossing traffic. Again, if they had immediate access to the signal, then they would not have to find another spot to U-turn at Lake Street, or I had mentioned Grafton Street at the last hearing, where they would be able to access Route Nine East again, but it's from a stop control, so they would have to find an appropriate gap in traffic, a large truck with oncoming traffic on Route Nine from a stop, which is not as desirable as immediate access to the signal to get back to four ninety-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who should be heard? Okay, seeing nothing, I want to take a motion. Was there a hand? Yes, ma'am.
Well, my question is not related to traffic.
Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Shi, I live on South Street. Two questions. How long is the construction is going to take?
First question, Mr. Ricker.
Probably fourteen months.
Fourteen months, approximately.
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 Sure. And second question is to the planning board. Would you please clarify, is the use of the land solely for dealership forever, or there's a time limit?
The owner of the property is building a car dealership. That's all we, there's no, there's no, we don't, when we do, we do a site plan, we don't put a date, so there's no time limit.
It's an allowed use in that zone.
Yes, all right. So for example, if say, God forbid, twenty years from now on, they decide to sell the property to somebody else, let's say refinery, and will the town allow it to continue, or it will require a change of use?
If the site is changed, they will have, whoever it is and whatever they're building would have to come back in front of the planning board for a site plan review.
Unless it's an allowed use and they use them the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, it could be another dealership, so that's not a change.
But any of them would have more than twenty parking spaces, so it would come back to you.
Right, so if, if there's a change, they would be coming, they would come back in front of the planning board.
Thank you. Now, say the dealership expanded, the business is booming, most likely that would be the case. Say they won't build a three-story. Would the town require another hearing?
Any changes after the site plan has been addressed through this hearing process?
Yeah.
They would have to come in for a site plan modification.
Okay.
So anything that is discussed?
Yeah.
Any conditions that are placed?
Right.
Once we get there, that's done. Any changes to those, they need to come back to this board to request a change for that.
Will there be a public hearing as well?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, I want to take a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the site plan approval for the proposed automobile dealership, Bach Shrewsbury Worcester LLC, seven oh one Boston Turnpike until March second, twenty twenty-three at seven P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I probably won't say that because I have to do my panel stuff. If I can see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, take a moment while these people exiting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for One Greenbrier Drive, Over Fifty-Five Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Cypress Avenue Development LLC. Location is One Greenbrier Drive and one six nine R Gulf Street. Please introduce yourselves.
Yes, John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates. On behalf of Cypress Ab Development Partners, I'm with Larry Rosenberg, who represents Cypress Ab Development Partners, and...
Stephen Blum, our other managing partner, is walking around the building somewhere, so...
I think he's trying to find a restroom.
Okay.
So since our last hearing, we wanted to make sure that we closed the hearing and got approval from Conservation Commission, which we did. So we're, yeah, here comes...
Here's Stephen.
Here comes Stephen now. So we're wrapped up with Conservation, that's complete. We're waiting for the last, also the last review letter from GZA, which we received that, and there weren't any changes associated with, with their comment letter. So we're at the, I think we're at the end of the line, so to speak. We did receive a draft decision from the planning department. There were a couple of things, I think they might have been typos in there.
Thank Louise for getting those corrected.
And they, they had the, the number of units, I think on, on one of the, one of the decision, draft decisions was they had a fifty-five units, the number's fifty-three units, and based on fifteen percent of that, the total number of inclusion every unit that would be associated would have to be eight units, as opposed to, I think they had nine listed in there when they, based on the fifty-five. So there was just a, a couple of typos in, in terms of those items. And lastly, the, the fee in lieu, which we are, have a, a request in to pay the fee in lieu, when we filed this, the, the fee associated with that was eighty-seven thousand three...
Three oh seven.
Eighty-seven, three oh seven, he's my numbers guy. Since then, the, the fee has been based on, on more recent numbers, is up to, I think, a hundred and...
Hundred and forty-one, seven ninety-seven.
Yeah, I got Rain Man. So, but when we did file the, and when we talked to Bernie Cahill, who was the planner at the time, he said, you know, get your plans in, get everything filed, and that would lock in your fee at the eighty-seven, three oh seven. So we just want to confirm that that's the, the correct number. It was the eighty-seven, three oh seven, which was at the time of, of our filing, so...
There was, yeah, actually, there was one other question we had. The way the draft was written, it says that the...
Oh, yeah.
All the fees for the inclusionary housing were to be paid before the first building permit. And I know that in other cases, that's a pretty onerous thing to do, to have to come up with a whole bunch of fees when you haven't built a one house yet. And I know that in some other cases, it's been, I don't know, in this case, we've got fifty-three units, so if you look at it in quarters, maybe the first thirteen units you do two, the next thirteen you do two, something like that, in terms of paying the fees into the trust would be a lot, I don't know, more equitable, because to come up, we, who knows if we're ever going to build all the units and all the money goes in upfront before you've even put a spade in the ground for the first building? And again, I do know that some other previous affordable have allowed for a provision to, to kind of phase it, like you would...
I think they did it on Lake Street.
So that was, that was the only other comment.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Any, are you guys done for right now?
Yeah.
Unless you have questions.
Questions from the board, Mr. Rao?
No, no questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jerry? I have none. Mr. Earlakis?
I have none.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no, no questions right now.
So I, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I know that Mr. Rao brought up at the last hearing, and I, I brought it up as well, that the density, I know that the number of units from the outset of this is down significant, well, I wouldn't say significantly, yeah, but when I look at it, the units that were attributed to the crossing that wasn't approved by Conservation, as far as I'm concerned, those shouldn't count in the mix, okay? So...
Can I, can I address that, though? It wasn't that they weren't approved, there was a question about that, and DEP would, would approve it. There, there's no question that, because we don't really have two, we don't have two crossings. We don't have any crossings in this plan.
Again, I'm not, I'm not here to discuss what's happened at Conservation.
All I'm saying is, we're entitled to a crossing. We have none in this plan, so that wouldn't give us two in the other plan, it would only give us the one.
Understood.
And we, we did it to be accommodating and to work with the town on that, rather than to go have a fight and, you know, would be, again, we're trying to be accommodating as much as we can.
We also were trying to be accommodating to some neighbors on Gulf Street as well, which is why we moved those units out of that area.
I, I just remember at the outset, when I looked at, you had the two separate areas, right? You had the twelve units over here, and then you had the massing of the other units. And I, I remember specifically telling you many a times, it's still too dense. I was worried about the, the parking lots were, I mean, the driveways and so forth. Other members on the board have also said that, I know if you looked at it in just a percentage based on the size of the land, it comes in a very low number, but the reality is, is the massing as, as it is, it's, it's still very concentrated. I'm just making a point here, okay? So when I look at where we're at today versus where we were at when it was first brought in front of the board, putting those twelve units off to the side because the crossing wasn't, wasn't going through Conservation, right? That puts the original plan at fifty-four units, and you're now at fifty-three. That's a one-unit reduction, so it's not a twenty percent reduction. It's a twenty percent in the overall for your initial plan, I get it. But when we look at the, the massing that, that we brought up, it really has, in my view, hasn't necessarily been addressed as best as it can. Is there, is there any indication whatsoever that you're, you're not, this is it, this is the best that you're going to do, is the fifty-three units?
That's, yeah. I mean, we, we meet all, obviously zoning setbacks, separation between units, we're not asking for a one waiver from any of the design guidelines, and we were...
Except a secondary means of access.
There's no requirement for that.
I think it says, I think it incorporates the subdivision rules and regs within the special permit by law. I think it does, John.
Well, at, at any rate, we reviewed it with the fire department, they're fine with access in and out of the lot, and with the analysis, even with when we were at sixty units, we were the least dense of any over fifty-five development in town. We're down to fifty-three units, and we're e- even further below the density of, of any other development that's been permitted in town, so we don't think it's out of line with, with any other development. And again, we're meeting, even on, on Wyman Farm, there was a variance granted to allow for units to be up to ten feet apart, which that was the case on, on a handful of the duplexes over there. We're not asking for any waivers, any variances on setbacks, so we meet, we meet all of the criteria.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who should be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is George Termonos, I live at six Redwood Lane. So I'm the closest abut her to the development, and my concern is, again, accommodations. I have a very severe slope which grades into the property that will be developed for the road access, and there's, so I would very, would like to stand how that will be graded, how that will be developed, and how that affects my property. There's also a lot of very large trees that are on our lines, whether it's into, I have a stone wall, a field stone wall that goes across the entire border of my property, and I just want to know, as, as far as, again, we, I think we talked about this before, was the, what is the plan? How are they going to approach the construction? Because there are steep grades, there is, there's a lapse, everyone get to the top top, but I think by my property is, it's, it's just ability. I want to make sure that whatever they do maintains, you know, doesn't affect my property, and if so, I have, you know, a means to address it. Also, with this road is my, although most of the road, there is a steep grade, and I'm not necessarily affected by it, I don't see it, it does at, at halfway through my property take a turn, and it's an uphill turn towards the development, and that is where my, our living room is. We have a, a deck there, we spend most of our time there. Without road will be graded, you know, should there be traffic, I'm concerned with, you know, light pollution, as, as well as with any lights that may be bordering the road, how will there be a down lighting, where will it be positioned, screening as well. So I did, would like to know, I think at some point, we said, what is the development plan? And that's my other concern, is just the, how long this will take. I mean, if I'm, based on what we're hearing, is, it's a phased development. First, there's the development of the property, you have a, you know, two-to-one, three-to-one slopes, there is a lot of ledge there, there's a lot of constructions going on, how is that going to be approached? How is that going to be phased, where it doesn't, you know, affect me, because I'm going to be right there while it's going on, like everybody else, I work at home, my wife works at home. We have, you know, things that we want to make sure that are reasonable to deal with on a, on a daily basis. So I don't know if we have a construction plan that's been submitted yet. Do we know how the grading will happen? Do we know if there'll be any fracking, any, any, any type of, you know, disturbance that will create, you know, maybe blasting or whatever that is? Do we know that yet?
You got a lot of questions there.
I have a ton of questions.
Well, let's see if we can answer some of them, I know you don't have the plans in front of you.
Yeah, so, well, the, any of the slopes that are behind his property, they're on his lot, we're not doing any grading, obviously, beyond the property line, we're not touching any of those slopes.
Is that true for the road, though? Does the road draw...
I'm talking, I'm talking about the slopes that are behind your property going down towards the, the common property line.
Well, well...
Hold on, let, 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 try to answer.
On our property, in the area where we would be passing adjacent to his lot, we're going to be bringing the, the elevation of the road up a little, we're not cutting it any further, we're not cutting it, which would hypothetically or potentially make that slope unstable, but we're raising the grade up in that area. And the grade difference between our road and at his property line, there's like a, at least a ten-foot elevation difference between our road grade and the grade at the back of his property, so he's quite a bit above us in terms of light pollution, any of the lighting that we have, obviously, any car lighting is going to be at two and a half feet high. They're not going to be, he's going to be at ten feet plus above us.
Before you go any further?
Go ahead.
I think you had mentioned, so it slopes down towards his property, so as the cars are coming down, that light, I think, is what you're concerned.
Yeah, when you're coming down from the development, past where they have the, the field of, of the clubhouse, that's, that's a downward slope towards my property, straight towards my, my living room. So again, I think, I think there's a perspective here, right? So I think, I, it's good to know if they're going to raise the road, they're not going to do excavation. I'm not sure how that's going to work, but that's fine. I'd say that would be a, a better situation, and we understand that it's going to be excavation, because I have to worry about, you know, trees, these are very large trees, do you affect the trees that run the property? I have two hundred-foot pines right next to my, will this affect that? Well, will it do the stability of, of my property? So, yeah, I have concerns there, but that, again, I think... But that, again, I think you'll, the narrative here is, is there are certain sections where this, this applies and there's certain sections where it doesn't because of the property, the way it's, the, the road comes down, so, yeah. But I think we should be specific on where the effect is and it is, there is effect. There's definitely effect in that section.
Well, a couple of things. There are cuts and fills, but where John was talking about near your property, that's gonna be a fill area for the road, as you said, raising the road up.
That's fine.
Okay. In terms of lighting, I, I don't have the plan right in front of me, but I don't see a point where it aims into your living room, but I could be mistaken in that case.
No, and, and we have a landscape plan, we are planting evergreens as a, as a screen, year-round screening, if, if there are any lights going in that direction. So we have a, we added a number of, of white pines so that we provide, provide screening for, for any light pollution. But again, most of the, the lights that we have, they're lamp post type lighting. We, we don't have any, this isn't, you know, the parking lot at, at Walmart, we have residential lantern type lights. So there shouldn't be light pouring on from, from any direction.
There's, there's no light there today. There's, it's just woods and I say, it's a, it's a big differential from what it is today, right?
Understood, well, probably still to get improved.
Again, yeah, I think we can, so it, will the field be lighted? Where are the, the clubhouses?
No.
No, so that's just gonna be a field with, with the clubhouses?
Yeah, that's just gonna be a grassed area with, there's a septic system in that area, so it's just gonna be a flat grassed area.
As far as whatever vegetation, large trees are, are on, are up either on our, between our, our lines or very close, will those be left alone? How, how close to my property will you excavate?
We're, we're gonna try to maintain every tree along the line. If there's any tree that is on the property line, we're, we're gonna maintain it. If, if there was a safety issue where the, the roots were being uprooted and it would be a safety issue, then we can address that at the time. But to the extent that we can keep every tree along the property line, we're gonna keep them.
Okay. As far as the construction plan, is that part of this consideration?
You have a phased plan, correct?
Right, and, and really, we're, we're cutting, we're creating a pad, a step pad, so we're gonna have to, you know, and, and we went through this with conservation as well, go and clear the trees that we need to clear so that we can do our cuts, do our fills, install the detention basin, install temporary detention basins so that we can get the, we can get the road infrastructure. And, and then we would be going forward with, you know, some model units and getting units built as, and, and a lot of that is market driven. But we would anticipate...
Appreciate that, but my question is, is as far as the development plan, is there a one? And do we have a timeframe around that development plan for phase one, let's say?
Well, to get the infrastructure in, it's, you're probably gonna be doing, it's gonna take, you know, at least six months to get the, the road and infrastructure. Some of that's weather dependent, but if this gets built, you know, late spring, early summer before you get into the, the fall and start getting into, into winter weather, the, the road and infrastructure would be in and then they'd be starting with development of, of units. So it, it could take a couple of years, again, building it out. But again, a lot of that is market driven. If, if it's, if the market is strong and you can't keep up, you're gonna be building specs and just keep on building them. If it's slow, you might wait till you get customers and get deposits before you stop breaking ground on individual units. So there is some flexibility in that.
And to further address your question, as I understand your concern, the, the heavy work is gonna be done in six months.
Well, yeah, I guess my concern, I'm not as concerned about the units as the preparation of the site, right?
Right.
Are you gonna prepare the entire site to receive all the units?
It would be commercially infeasible to do that in phases. I mean, we're gonna come in and do the entire site.
So you're gonna do, so the entire site is, will be planned or prepared?
Pretty much.
For 53 units?
Yes.
How long will that work to?
Six to nine months.
Yeah.
Six to nine months to do all the grading, all the sloping, to get everything ready for the units?
I mean, we have to work around the schedules and the people that are doing the work, but nine months probably at the outset.
Okay, so for worst-case scenario, we're talking one year just to prepare the site to receive the 53 units?
And that would be all of it.
Let's put it this way, we hope not, because we want to get some houses up as quickly as possible.
I get it, I get it. Because, again, you understand, I think you appreciate that.
Absolutely.
The last thing I wanna be, I've been there for a long time. If you, if anybody with a reasonable expectation of five years of construction behind their home is obviously gonna be very concerned. So I think I can take certain pieces with a grain of salt, which is okay. Well, the, the individual units will be done over a period of time. But my bigger concern is, is the preparation of the site. Because that's where the trucks, large trucks, deeps, all this, whatever excavation's going to happen is going to happen. Okay. But I guess back to my original question, will this site development plan be part of the decision? Or no? So will they have to come and say, this is how we're gonna approach the development? How we're gonna do this, you know, this, or is that not part of the consideration?
So the plant sets that are provided or what the board can base their decision on, if they want, you know, if the board would like to see more detailed phasing plans, that's something that I think is...
We do have constructed sequencing.
Right.
And that was, and that was required by conservation as well. So we do have a sequencing plan in as part of the design set.
Yep, so, you know, if the board feels a need for more detail than that, they can, they can request that. But I would note that, you know, as part of the construction management through the building permit process and, and, you know, obviously our management of this project will be, you know, maintaining the site as well.
Sequency is pretty clear, but I mean, as Stephen just mentioned, I mean, we have to also work around the contractors and their availability and materials and things like that. So it's very difficult to say on Tuesday, we're gonna start this. That's gonna be first and then this'll be next, but how long it takes is, is somewhat up in the air. Again, within reason and that's why we think six to, six months I think is probably good, but I, I would say nine to be safe. But, I mean, trying to, trying to lay that out on a per chart, day by day is, is just not gonna be effective. This won't work.
Yeah, I agree with what you're gonna say, this is, this is how we develop this. You know, it's gonna start with this road construction. The estimation is this, it will be involved, we'll use that, you know, raising the road end and all that. And then this will go into grading. You know, you're gonna clear the site, you're gonna grade the site, you're gonna maybe have to do some, you have to be blasting or something to do, whatever. That, that's the type of thing I'd like to understand.
And we, that's, we do have that sequencing in, in our plans. And again, that was something that was, that's always required to conservation, because they wanna know in, in terms of making sure that you're maintaining the site, maintaining the slopes, making sure that you're not gonna have any issues with, you know, having anything go into the wetlands. We provide sequencing plants and that's part of the design set.
Okay. Um, as far as what we just talked about, is just maintaining that, the vegetation, is that something that we can build into the, as far as accommodations? To say if there is vegetation within this, you know, within, you know, the setback, we will agree to, at the very least, consult or very, or not do or something? Can we build that into an accommodation? And can we build screening into accommodation as well?
And when, when, when we start the project, we send the surveyors out, they stake out the limit of clearing.
Okay.
So they will stake out, you know, and mark trees, cut this tree, save this tree. If there is, say there's a 36-inch oak tree that's riding the line, that's something that we would, at, at that time, say, talk to a neighbor and say, hey, there's a big tree here. We might be able to save it, it's, it's right on the line and have that discussion at, at that time. But we have a limit of clearing that is within our property line. If there is, like I said, a big tree that has roots that we're gonna be uprooting and it might be a safety issue, then we would deal with that. And if you want, we would have no problem dealing with, you know, approaching and saying, hey, half this tree is on your property, half it's on our property, we're gonna be uprooting it when we strip it, you know, and, and work with not just you, but any other neighbors.
I appreciate the sound, but could that be part of the, the accommodation? Say, within, there is a plan and this is, you know, spelled out within the plan, even the landscaping? Is that going to be on the plan?
This is turning into more of a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd rather have it not be that, okay? So, give me one second, I'm gonna ask the...
I think what I could offer is potentially a condition that I've used in other communities and I think we probably would, would end up doing anyways. So one condition that's included in the draft decision is the pre-construction meeting. What I've done in the past is have a site walk done for that pre-construction meeting and it's done in tandem with the inspection of erosion control. So we'll have conservation come out that they, they do that as part of their normal duties. But it allows us to have that pre-construction meeting. We're walking the site anyways for the erosion control. And at that time, we can have the limit of, of work staked out. And what, what we can do is have planning staff, we'll, we'll walk the site with you as well and see, as you had mentioned, you know, if there's trees that are on the line that are, you know, potentially viable, we can, can work on the, a plan for specific protection of those.
Okay.
Thanks.
If that's amenable.
Yeah, I don't know what's, what's possible for that. I'm just looking for combinations, right? So it sounds like, can I be included within that walkthrough? Or how's that work?
I typically try to do those not, you know, because we are kinda going into the technical details of the project, you know.
But if there was something...
I would, I would defer to the applicant if a, if a separate, I'd be willing to do a separate site walk, you know, after the pre-construction and, and help lead us.
Yeah, I suggest.
If you could notify, I mean, you can have, if you could notify me when that was done and I could be notified of the findings and if I could have the opportunity to then discuss those.
Yeah, I would suggest that if it came to a point where, in George's case, it happened to be, there was a tree that we needed to deal with, at that point, we could talk about a second meeting or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's, there's multiple trees, I mean, it's very large.
I, I just, I just stand, I'm just saying.
You know, you know.
Pick a tree, but...
Okay. I, I think that's all I have, no? I appreciate, you know, you allowing me, but it's, it's a, it's a very large project. It's, it's a very rural area and, but it is what it is, right? Like I said, did one, was there a MIBA study done with this? Was that a requirement for this?
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't meet any threshold for MIBA.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay. Oh, and the, the septic, has it been approved yet?
That's into the Board of Health for review. So the, the short answer is no, but it's, it's, it's had a cursory review. There was a change in staff at the Board of Health. So I did review it with, with the previous health agent. And I need to talk to the new health agent, but everything's, it's pretty cookie cutter. We've done a million of these.
And everything's below ground, right? There's no tanks above ground?
Correct.
But not only that, this was originally designed for more than 53 units so that the area that was picked up is...
Even, yeah.
Is, is, now that we're down to 53, it's even, so there's not gonna be an issue. Just a question of getting the final design approved.
Right.
And those tanks will be, they're, they're coming towards my property, or the leach field is, right? But you're not touching that, that ledge that jets out at the corner of my property? That's gonna stay as is?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay, seeing none, it's the pleasure of the board.
Still a long time since this has been filed. I know the applicant, again, I kind of agree, I more than kind of agree. I think the project's a bit dense. I, I'd like to see a few less units on that bulb. I know you guys have worked hard to try to accommodate us and I appreciate that. I appreciate the double-barrel road. At the end of the day, this is a special permit and this board has a tremendous amount of discretion. This is not an as-of-right use. So I, I don't wanna have a dialogue or an open negotiation here and now. Not a tremendous amount of units, but I'd like to see some units shaved off. Maybe get the project down to 48.
It starts to make it economically infeasible.
Well, let me ask you a question. If we were to consider that, would you, since you have this discretion as a special permit, would you consider waiving the inclusionary fee?
You'd need a variance for that.
But I, I...
You have less units.
Just so, I mean, we are kinda having this little negotiation as we're talking right now. We haven't closed the public hearing yet.
And I appreciate you working with us.
So my position on the, on the inclusionary fee and lieu has been pretty straightforward from the get-go, right? I'm not a fan of it and I was probably not gonna vote for that anyways. However, if we can get a few more units out of this, then I would be inclined to, to be more in favor of the fee and lieu.
I don't think the DHCD loves the, loves the administration of the affordable units. So I'd be in favor of the fee and lieu.
Yeah, I don't think CHAPA, because it's age-restricted, is gonna count them towards a quota anyway.
Yeah.
I believe we found that.
And I'm in favor of you being locked down at the 87 grand.
You couldn't age restrict those units.
Yeah. The DHCD doesn't allow you to do it.
I remember we looked and I don't have the detail in front of me, but I do know that...
John got it for us.
Yeah, that, that has been addressed.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm pretty sure we have information, Mr. Mesher, if you, you nodding on that.
If it, if they're age-restricted, I don't believe they count.
It's okay, but it's, it's our zoning by law and I, and I'm inclined to, at least my position as one member of the board, that you're locked in at the 87 grand. I don't, I don't think that's fair to you to, to have the flux. But that said, again, I think the project is a bit too dense. I appreciate your efforts, I understand where you're coming from on the economics. But I'd be inclined to vote for a project a bit smaller. Again, this isn't, the public area isn't closed, I'm just, and I don't think that I'm unique. I, I think it's pretty much the consensus of this board.
I've been obviously saying that for a while, so. I've only, I've been saying it for a year or so.
Everybody.
Not on just this hearing.
So I, yeah, my position is not one that's been in question, I don't think.
Something to be said for consistency.
Yes, sir.
It presents a bunch of other issues too, because it sounded, we're gonna have to go back to, if we were to do that, we'd have to probably go back to conservation.
Not if it's smaller. Correct.
I, I don't see how, less, less units, less disturbance.
Yeah.
Well, there's no disturbance to begin with, so.
So I'm just not 100% clear. Do, do, does your board have the discretion to waive some of the inclusionary units? Or are you saying you do not?
It's based on a formula.
Waive the fee on some of the...
We, we have the discretion to do a fee and lieu or have the units built.
All right.
That's the, that's what your, your waiver is for.
We also have the discretion to determine what price it is. Either the 87 or the 140.
And we, we certainly appreciate your honoring the 87, so that's, that's a very good...
Right, so, I don't know what to do here. This kinda came at a surprise to us.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we take some time to think about it? Because I know I'm struggling with the 53 units. And if, if I had my, you know, feet to the fire today, I would not be in favor of this plan as, as derived. So if, if there's a manner in which we can get some units removed, I would be more inclined to, to be in favor of the project.
I think you look at, I think you've got, if you get rid of five units, it makes, it lays out so much better.
And the driveways, you can make it so the driveways wouldn't cross each other either, like Mr. Blay had mentioned in the past. Because that was one of our safety concerns.
I mean, I'm fine with continuing this hearing one more month for you to at least go back, do your financial analysis, do whatever you think you can do, understanding that we're looking for less units. And if we can do that...
Even if we did that though, we're gonna have to come back with a new plan, so we wouldn't be able to close this today anyway. Am I correct?
I could close, technically I could, I think we could close and vote on a plan that says that we approved the special permit at... that says that we approve the special permit at no more than forty-eight units. I don't know if that's, that was my number, I don't know if the board agrees with me. No more than forty-eight units, applicant to come back with an amended site plan, and that way, at least you get your clock ticking, if you have anybody who's thinking about anything.
You don't have to make that decision today, but if you don't make that decision today, then we'll continue it by another month, so.
Could I ask, could we at least get a vote tonight on the eighty-seven thousand dollars?
I would not likely vote on that particular special permit tonight. I think we can poll the board, and I think we're pretty honorable people, we would not change our mind later at that.
Could we do that, then? That would be-
If, if, if that's one element that's gonna help you with your, your thought process, I mean, I'll poll the board, just, this is a non-binding vote, but would you be in favor of honoring the eighty, what was it, eighty-six thousand?
Eighty-seven, three oh seven.
Eighty-seven, three oh seven, eleven, right?
So you're locked, you're locked in, and I'm assuming that-
I think there's thirty-eight cents.
That's, I'm taking you at your word, I have no reason to doubt that that was the-
I don't have it with, I didn't show you that.
There's a paper that Bernie Kayle gave us.
That was the number at the time, your special permit, your site plan was filed. I'm good with that.
So, would, would it make sense to honor the lower value for the fee and lieu?
Yeah, I remember it as eighty-seven, three oh eight. But I'd be, I'd be okay with three oh seven.
Obviously Steve's in favor of that, I would be in favor.
Yeah, depending on what comes back with the plan.
So if that helps you with your decision outside of this, we can continue the public hearing the next month.
And then, one last thing, what about the phasing of the payment of the fee?
I, I personally don't have a position on that, I don't know if the planning department has any prior experience. I think it, it's sensible to do phasing in for something like that, you get X number of permits, you pay X percentage of that fee and lieu.
You did that for Lake Street for Jim Haynes.
Yeah, I think what I would, if that's an approach, again, including a condition, phasing them and making sure that the affordable units are constructed prior to unlocking the market rate units, so you don't wind up with a-
If we do a fee and lieu, there is not.
Yeah.
But what they're looking for is a phased payment.
We don't need to build a permit until the-
Forty-eight units would still be eight affordables, just 'cause it rounds up.
Well, that's my, that was gonna be my next question. Go down some more.
Well, well-
That would be seven point two at forty-eight, it would be seven point two, the fee would be seven point, the equivalent of seven point two units. Can that get rounded to seven as opposed to rounding up to eight?
Does that require a variance? I don't know.
I'd be willing to look the other way.
All right. Me, too.
So, Mr. McGoldrick.
So, it's a construction, but similarly, I would just look for the condition to have the, the fee being paid and unlocking the remainder of the market rate.
Right, so I think we can, we can phase in a payment schedule for the fee and lieu.
I'll make one up. A fee for two units for the first twelve, the fir-, on the thirteenth permit, it would be another two on the, whatever that is, the twenty-fifth unit.
Something like that.
Something like that, yes.
Something like that.
And you could do all twos, pick up all the money you said.
Except for the last one, which is, it would be one.
Well, let's see if we can.
Okay. All right, so does it sound reasonable, that you can go off and do an evaluation?
Yeah.
Do we wanna go off, or do we wanna have them close the hearing?
If we-
They close.
They got sixty days to vote, right?
Right, we have sixty days from the close of the hearing.
Yeah.
If you feel that you'll have your answer, we can close the public hearing now, and then we won't vote until next month.
By doing that, are we locking ourselves into the forty-eight units?
No, if by doing that, you're, you're stopping the continuing conversation with the public.
Okay.
You know what we're gonna, you kinda know what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
You're a lawyer, right? I know what we're gonna do.
I think we have the answer, we just have to figure out the question, so.
Does the board have an aversion to closing the hearing and voting on this, like deliberating and voting on the same night, or is that?
No, we can deliberate.
I, I could close the hearing right now and deliberate and tell you that I would grant a special permit for no more than forty-eight units, subject to the applicant coming in with an amended site plan satisfactory to the board. At least that way you get the special permit.
Yeah, and all I'm really gonna do is, is get rid of some duplexes and make them singles.
I don't care how you do it.
I know, that's, I mean, just 'cause- And realign the driveway.
As long as the site plan makes sense.
Yeah, we'll be doing a little, yeah, I'm not gonna leave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that are facing each other.
So is that the direction you'd like to go, that it gives you the special permit discussion done, or do you want time to think about it? Again, I don't wanna put you-
Yeah, we're not trying to push you, it's, we're-
Yeah, let's do that.
What's that?
Let's close it today.
Let's close the hearing.
Close it?
Yeah.
And you want us to vote?
On the special permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the conditions that we discussed.
The conditions I discussed.
Steve said. If that, if that's your will, we can certainly go forward with that.
Well, let me ask you a question. We close it right now, and you vote on the forty-eight?
But we don't have a, we don't have a decision to file with the clerk.
I mean, if we came back to you next month and said, you know what, this works at fifty, but not forty-eight, we're, we're included from doing that, is what you're saying?
No, all right, then why don't we just continue it a month?
We can just continue it, you go off and do due diligence, understanding what we're targeting.
Yeah.
What our number is. And-
And John can work on the site plan, he could.
Okay, that gives us some time to work on the numbers, because frankly, this is numbers-driven, and as you guys know, it's, everything's getting much more expensive to do, and every time we cut out a unit, I mean, we're not making, this is not, you know, this is-
I get it.
It's gonna be a beautiful project, but everything costs a lot more money than it used to, so.
Even, even money costs more than money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I, my understanding is, why don't we, why don't we just entertain, continue the public hearing until next month?
Until March third.
But when we, when we do that, when we come in next month, and let's assume we have a plan of forty-eight units.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically. I mean, at that point, we're, we're done, right?
Assuming we like the site later.
Assuming, yeah, so, we'll, we'll get something, we'll do the same thing that we did this past time, we'll have a draft decision for you to review, we'll work with the planning department on that.
Yep.
That will include language that, because your site plan may not have all the detail that is required, right? But if it's got the general sense, and in the condition, we can say that a site plan that meets the, subject to the planning board's approval of that amended site plan, that at least gets you started, started.
Okay. That sounds fair.
Okay.
That makes sense? I just think you're not happy, but.
All right.
No one was happy tonight.
Not your job that made me happy. No, but I understand where we are, and I think, I think that we should continue the hearing.
Let's continue it, March second, is it? March second.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the Greenbrier Drive site plan review and special permit until March second, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry to catch you black-footed on that.
All right, so that does it for our, for our meeting schedules. We do have some open items still to consider on our new business. First item is to discuss a draft warrant language for the zoning update for annual town meeting. Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, I'm the chairman of members of the board, so I have a proposal and some draft warrant language that's been prepared for you tonight, for the two zoning articles that we are requesting your support of. The first is the adult day health establishments. This is a use that is somewhat driven from licensure from the Division of Healthcare Facility Licensor and Certification Program. As I had mentioned in the previous meeting, we have had businesses that have approached us looking to, you know, redevelop sites, looking at this use in particular, and this licensure. What it is, is primarily an alternative to nursing home use, where they provide, you know, day activities, social activities, as well as some nursing care and other kind of oversight and support outside of a, you know, long-term or staying care facility. So similar to like a senior center, but a, you know, private entity. So we're requesting this use, we looked at the zoning bylaw as it stands, and we did not find that this use was explicitly provided for. And so, the request here is to define the use. We are specifically citing the Division of Healthcare Facility Licensor and Certification Program, as well as that language around the therapeutic and social recreational activities. And we have also included in the table of uses to allow this use in a number of districts, notably the Residence B two, the two multifamily districts, the apartment district, limited business, the Town Center District, commercial business, limited commercial business, neighborhood business, and office research, and limited office research districts, looking at some of the more commercial and higher density uses, or districts. We're proposing to allow this by special permit with the planning board, which would then presumably trigger site plan as well, providing that any of these uses would come before the board for their review and approval under those criteria. So that's our proposal. I think there is a demand for this type of use, not just in Shrewsbury, especially as we work towards communities and residents who seek to age in place. I think that, you know, we wanna provide for opportunities outside of traditional modes, and I think that this would be a beneficial use to include and allow by special permit with the board's discretion.
Any questions or comments relative to that?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question. I'll be quick. Have you seen any other towns do this, this added by law like this?
I, I did not include in this a review of similar uses in other communities, but I'm happy to-
No.
I think Worcester, I think Worcester has.
I just wonder, you know, if I was an applicant, I might, you know, just like a daycare facility for kids, I may say, no, it's an adult day school health center, we're gonna have an educational component, and I'm coming in on the Dover, I'm gonna put it anywhere. I just wonder if anybody's done that, not in town, anywhere else. Just curious. It's not a statement.
This is a statement, okay, very good. Our next article?
So the next article, let me just pull that up, is similarly, we're looking to provide a, you know, certain modernization of one of our regulations. This is actually a footnote that I'm sure the board is aware of in our table of uses. So that footnote specifically limits the square footage of non-gasoline sales for accessory uses to a gasoline service station, to the thirty-five hundred square feet. This was amended last in two thousand and three. What I find notable is that this is not applicable in commercial districts, which in terms of gasoline facilities and retail components, I think is somewhat less conducive to some of those types of uses. This is just the industrial district where this would apply. We're seeking to remove that, which I think would facilitate, you know, a more modern approach, you know, I had mentioned the Cumberland Farms model, where the retail sales is actually the driver for most of these facilities, and the gasoline sales is primarily a driver for traffic to the site and to the retail components. I do note that this is still for accessory uses related to gasoline sales, so it's not explicitly allowing just commercial business in our industrial zone, it still would have to be related to a gasoline service station. This is, I think, a precursor to an effort that I'd like to undertake in the, in future reviewing our zoning, not just for non-gasoline sales, but looking at alternative fuel sources. Notably, tonight, we had an applicant looking for hydrogen fuel, as well as obviously the influx of E V infrastructure. And so I think modernizing our zoning to incorporate alternative fuel sources would be a progressive and beneficial addition, but that would be done at a later date, this is just removing the square footage requirement.
Seems to make sense.
Questions or comments?
No.
None.
When do we anticipate closing the warrant?
The warrant is not open, or-
It'll be the second meeting in March at the select board.
Yeah.
Yep. So, we usually keep these open for, but they're not in front of us yet, this is just-
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, yeah, this proposal would be, I'd like to schedule the public hearings for the March, and then forward this to the select board for their comment.
Yep.
If supported by the board.
Sounds reasonable. Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, Mr. McGoldrick.
We don't need the vote, do we?
No, this is just a point of information. Our next item of business is Falcon Farm subdivision, discuss and vote on the approval of a construction of a model home on lot number nine. Mr. McGoldrick.
Yeah, so this is a request for just the construction of the model home on lot nine of the Falcon Farm subdivision. This is not for a lot release, so this is not requesting occupancy or otherwise, you know, sale of the property, it would still be restricted by the covenant that is in place. Construction of the road has not yet begun, but this is the corner lot, lot nine is the corner lot that is also along the south, South Street access as well. So, yeah, the request is just for approval of the model home. We did review, and there is some precedent of the board approving model homes prior to lot releases and, you know, formal construction of the subdivision, but it is at the discretion of the board, so.
This is the corner lot, correct?
Correct.
So, is it anticipated that he's gonna construct the road, so he'll access this home from the road, or from South Street?
So the, the road that is provided, the current plan is to access it off of Falcon, so they would begin construction of the, of the road as well, presumably.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think, which accounts for the six-month timeline that he includes in the estimated construction of the model home, so.
Okay.
And there is a covenant in place, right?
Correct, and that would still be binding on this property.
I've not recalled doing this in the past, I'm sure you and me have.
We've done it in the past.
Okay, so it's pretty standard.
Fairly standard.
At what point could this house be sold?
So they, I mean, I, I guess you may be able to sell a contingent upon the covenant, but it would not be released.
No one would ever buy it.
I'm not sure if that's even-
When could this house be sold? Is when he posts, when he posts the surety to complete the subdivision road.
And then the board would vote to release the lot, and then it could be occupied and sold.
So this isn't going to subvert?
Correct, that's my question, yes. Roundaboutly, that's my question.
And the, the letter explicitly says that they're not looking for occupancy.
That's part of the covenant? The letter is part of the covenant?
Well, the, the covenant is binding on the lot regardless of the letter.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
No.
Stand a motion to-
I, I move that we authorize the construction of lot number nine in the Falcon Farm subdivision as a model home, understanding that it's not gonna be released from the covenant or until inadequate surety's been placed for the completion of the subdivision road and-
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our last item of business, is to vote to correct the decision of the planning board- All right, that brings us to our last item of business, is to vote to correct the decision of the planning board regarding application for site plan approval for four twenty Boston Turnpike Permit Number S P A dash zero one dash two zero two three, Mr. McGoltry.
Yeah, so this is a, a request to correct a clerical error in the decision for the four twenty Boston Turnpike. It's not substantial to anything in regards to the intent or conditions of the plan. The change is just for the reference of the site plan date, the incorrect date was included on the reference to the site plan in the conditions, this would provide what was the intended date of the board of the most recent plan set.
So, this, is this an amended decision?
This is just a clerical correction, so the board does vote on it, and then we provide the revised to the clerk, as well as an affidavit that gets filed at the Registry of Deeds noting the clerical change.
Any questions or comments about that?
No questions, no.
Well, entertaining motion?
I move that we correct the clerical error set forth in the, this, our decision for site plan approval relative to four twenty Boston Turnpike, and authorize the planning department to take appropriate action with the clerk to rectify the situation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that does it for our agenda, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?